Greetings to everybody. Hello and oh. You have caught me. You caught me, starting without you. I couldn't help myself. This is what happens sometimes. I am in Numasequay. It's nighttime, but... I had this idea about what I wanted to do to make the upstairs of Penelope's workshop my place for the time being, like my temporary place. So, um, this is just such a beautiful view. Look at this. I love this greenness. I love looking out over the swamp like this. Now, the city's over in this direction. You can see the housing, the apartments for our five citizens, right here. And over in this way is towards the mountains, toward the road. I want to, and what I'm going to work on while they're working on their town, what I want to do is open this up and make this entire little tiny porch here stretch all the way across this side of the house of her workshop. And then have like a sliding glass door to get out onto it and glass the rest of that part in and just have this lovely little covered shaded area for like the rest of the place. I already put in a... It was too awkward to try and get off of this porch any other way except to go up. And that's the whole point of this place anyway, is that I can get to it from the air, which is wonderful. You can see one of the caves off in the distance that's lit up. And it's nice and peaceful tonight. We do have some mobs, but this is creative, so they are also peaceful right now. But in order to get the people up, let's go to sleep. And greetings, greetings. It's nice to see you. And this is Numasequay. So, here we are. You can see someone having breakfast over... That's probably charity, it looks like, having breakfast in the... in her apartment over there. Let's get into the air. It's still a little difficult. I have to do it right perfectly, but in comparison to everything else, it's actually really, really nice. Penelope, I do not think is working on anything, and so this is what we're going to look at. What is everybody doing? We have a new young man, our kid who we got, and let's explain how we got our kid. So I had a misunderstanding about these apartments. I was looking at these apartments as individual apartments, and so they're not living together. But my colonies is looking at this apartment complex as a single house. And so I did have men and women living together, and that's why we got Noah. But we won't get anyone else because we don't have any more room, any more apartments made. And the next apartment we're going to make is... I would have to separate the men from the women in order to not have any kids, which I'm happy to do right at the beginning here. So as soon as the city hall is completed, because the city hall will have some beds, we will move the men back to city hall for the time being until we build a second apartment building or second set of housing that doesn't involve people, men and women, living together right at this moment. So we can see that Penelope, if I'm not mistaken, is still working on this. She might need something, but let's see. Yep, because we're only at building level 3, which means we only have... Well, two people can sleep there. And this isn't ready yet. The upstairs isn't built yet. So let's... We will go see what Penelope needs for her build to finish this. Over here, we have Jerome, and Jerome has finished the platform for the new warehouse. And I kinda have a problem with this, which is why the warehouse is not here. Because I made it, there's only one entrance into this warehouse, and it's right here. And what that would mean is, bless you, bless you. Vincentius Primus has a cold, and he is sniffling during my stream. But...
I could sit in the car every night.
But, um, I might have to turn this around. It depends on what I decide right now, because see, you can see the opening right there. Unless we're going to build train tracks across, and even if we do, it still makes it that the delivery people have to walk all the way around to this entrance in order to get to everything. And so I'm a little... Despite all the work he's done and everything, I believe that I'm going to have to re-put this in a different locate... Put this in a different direction. And so if I had it facing towards... See, it doesn't... I don't know why I can't sort of... I'll have to figure it out. I suppose I could have the train tracks come in front, come across here, come across the water, and then go straight out and around, because this is what I'm trying to do. We will have train tracks to come over to what will eventually be another town where this huge lava monolith is, because I just love that. But... But still, for the convenience of the town, it just, I don't know. I love that, the idea of that underground... Of the underground warehouse. I really like the idea. But only one entrance. And a part of me is a little distressed by that. Let's see if we have it on us. We don't, so we'd have to make a new one anyway. Let's go to... Let's, um, let's go here for a minute. Let's go here. Ah, yeah. I'm gonna have to fix that. Let's just take these away for momentarily. I'm going to get a warehouse. And here's one. And let's see what this looks like one more time. So we have this lovely platform here. So let's set this right in the middle. And we've got warehouses, and the very first one that's come up is the Dark Oak Warehouse. Now, I've built the Dark Oak Warehouse before, and if I was going to build it, I'd need to build it in the jungle. It's really gorgeous. It has enough entrances and is really probably what I should be making, but I don't want to. I don't want to make that. So let's move this back for a second. So that's just level 1. A level 5 looks like this. Oh, look at that. That is actually changed. This warehouse is different. Oh, how interesting. It has some differences that it didn't have before. Ah, now that is very curious. But see how many doors it has, so it makes it really convenient as a warehouse. Hello, hello. Hello, everyone. And you will hear Vincentius Primus having a cold in the background, but pay no attention. Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain.
Ignore my misery.
Ignore his misery. So see this? I'm torn. I'm torn. So I was going to build the... I was going to build the mine over here. So let's look at our boundary. We can see the boundary for the town, although we can't. That's interesting. When we turn this way, we can actually see it. That's very curious. Ah, there we go. Maybe I just have to be down a little bit closer. But now I'm wondering if I should just go ahead and actually build this type of warehouse, what I was originally building there. And let's go to it. Definitely not that, but that's new. A medieval birch warehouse is new. And the medieval warehouses, that is very fascinating. And wow, there's a medieval birch alternative warehouse. Ooh, look at that thing. These are new since I started. Since I started Numasequay, these are all new. Wow. I actually like that. Let's rise up for a minute. Look at that. That is really fascinating. So let's see. Let's go in for a minute. And let's look inside at this new... Yeah, so that's what this one looks like on the inside. And on the outside, let's see how many doors it has. So we have a main entrance door there. And we have a second set of doors. See, that's the thing that I'm looking for. Alright, so that is that. And there's an alternative one of all the different woods, which is really quite cool. There's a new sandstone. Let's see what it looks like, what changes. There's the back door. I have one of these in New... In Omo, in my mine colony, Omo. And yeah, no, that's actually pretty much the same, that one. And then Space Wars, Taiga. Wow, that's intense. The Taiga one's gorgeous. Look at the size of that thing. Man, oh man. There's a second door. There's a third door. Excellent. And there's a fourth. So that's my problem with the acacia one. And let's go to the next one. There's a mesa. Now, there wasn't a mesa warehouse before. This is new. And that is super cool. Look at that. And it's also small, which is really kind of interesting. And there's two doors. And wow, you know, in all honesty, I would almost rather have this one. But let's give acacia a chance, because it didn't come up first, which is interesting. And there's a stone one, which I'm standing in the middle of. That's how huge it is. Right, and then, let's see. Let's just turn this around for a second. Yeah, and then wooden, and there's the acacia. Alright, so let's see it again. Let's see if it has changed in some way. It only had one door. Most of the warehouse is underground, which was something I actually kind of really liked. But I don't know whether it makes sense in this location. See, all of it is really sort of underground here, all of this. And that's actually really so cool. So what do you think? Except that it only has the one door. Now, I could alter it, I suppose, but there's no guarantee that the colonists, the delivery people, will use a second door if it's not actually in the mine colony... What would you call it? Plans already? And so even though that's really cool looking, it's impractical in the fact that it only has the one door, especially in this location that we have for it. So I think I'm actually going to have to not do that one, pick a different one, which is why I was starting this over. So there's the birch, which is a monster, a wonderful monster, but it doesn't fit the landscape in a way that I would like. The Dark Oak, I would have to put it someplace else, I think. And these are huge and interesting. But the mesa one... The thing about the mesa one is that because of the swamp and the color of the acacia that we've already started on this side. See, we have these acacia buildings. The mesa actually looks interesting as a part of that. And I like mixing things, so I'm going to... Look at that skeleton in full armor. He's not wearing a helmet, but he's fully armored. Let's move this into position. So we would have... Let's turn it around. There are two doors on that side and the one giant door on that side. Let's put the one giant door facing out this way for the railroad, still. I still would like to do that. So this would be the regular road right here, but I want to have the railroad come out in front of this. So what are we talking about? Let's move this way. And let's see. So it's still big. They're all still, still pretty big. And this is what we would be looking at. Let's bring these down. Two, three, back. There. And... Yeah, I think that one, two, that I did, I think I'd need to move it back. One, two. Let's see. If that's not... If that's directly on the road, that's fine, so long as it's not. So let's do that. Let's decide that this monstrous building, this warehouse, is going to be right here. How do I feel about that in relationship to where city hall is? So if you'd come out of city hall, and this building would be here like this. I don't like it. I don't like it. I'm not sure I like the way it looks. What do you think? What do you think? Yeah, that's the thing. So let me try one more time to look at the acacia. That would be sitting... So this is how the acacia would be. Let's have it rise up. Let's see. That would be correct. Let's turn it around. And let's escape for a second. And let's come over here. And let's move back into this area. So if we had it facing a different way, if we had it facing so that the main entrance came around either this way or this way. So this is the thing that I would like to see. So let's... What if we had turned this completely around? The main entrance be right here. So what we would be saying is that a railroad would actually start right here. We would still have enough space. So what would that be like if we actually arranged for a railroad station to also be right here? So close to that housing, interesting, to come around and go this way or to go this way? To be out here and go this way? Yeah, that's what I'm figuring out. So let's see. That is the fun of trying to figure it out. And ordinarily, I would ask for people to help and say, "What do you think? What would you vote on?" Or should it simply just be turned this way, facing towards this way? But if we do that... So if we do that, then what we're doing is there won't be any way... There won't be any sort of way that the... That the train could be included in this section of it. We would have to... And it's a shame right now you can't show both buildings at the same time. So if I turned it around this way... This is turned around from the way it actually is positioned now, the way he was working on it to be positioned. But if I turned it around this way... Let us click on this for a minute, and let's escape. Let's escape. Let's take the warehouse and put it here. And then let's go here for a minute. There is something else that we could do if we wanted. So now we're getting warehouses, but let's go to decorations, acacia. And let's rise up, and let's see if we can find a railroad station. So canal bridge, canals, waterfalls, roads. There's a fancy railroad bridge. There's fancy what? What is that? Ah, it's fancy field, if I'm not mistaken. That's fancy field. Acacia fancy field, field, fork. Those roads, and there's railroad, railroad bridge. See that? So we could actually build it in front, but we still don't have another house to go behind it. Bridge end, bridge corners, uphill, and there's a rail stop right there. Straight rail, tunnels, and a rail turn, U-turn, a bridge, storage. Now look at this storage. Let's come down, but this wouldn't be storage like warehouse, so they wouldn't go in and get anything from here. So that would just be a different type of storage. And a tree field, underwater bridge column, wall corners. I think that's it. So we don't technically have a train station. We have places for rail. We have tunnels. Storage. Storage is probably the closest thing to a train station. And then the rail bridge. Let's go back. Yeah, because then after that, you're into fields again. So it's the storage place, the U-turn, and the stop. So this stop right here would actually be how you'd get the trains to run and stop in front. And that storage building... Let's go back to it for a second. Can I find it? So see that rail bridge right there? You should have a rail bridge and one of these storage buildings. And use the storage building as a rail stop, as an actual railroad stop. Except, notice that, there isn't any way in into this building. It's just there. Let's come down in here for a second. Yeah, okay, those are gates and stuff, but not really. Not really. So isn't that interesting? I beg your pardon. Isn't that interesting? Isn't that curious? So... I don't know that I want to do that. I don't know that I want to do that version now that I think about it. I'm more inclined... And the reason I wanted it there was because then we have farms. We're going to have farms over here. We should have delivery on both sides of the warehouse. So we would have delivery here and delivery here. And then have... And then have the city and like restaurant. We're gonna have... We're supposedly having the mine right here. We can have the mine and smeltery and all in this section maybe. And continue on this side over here. But I'm doing this wrong, aren't I? Isn't that so odd? But I've completely had a total change of mind about how I would like this to work all of a sudden. Do you see what I see? Do you see what I see? I think that I'm crazy. I think that I'm crazy to not be building the mine right here. To have the mine in this area, have a smeltery, mine, all of that stuff over here. If we did that, we could possibly. Put the warehouse. Right here across from this section of people, um, over here. We can put something else, but I don't think I want to put the um mine here. Even though I've, I filled this out, and part of the reason I don't want to. Um, let's take this down, part of the reason I don't want to is because this is gorgeous. This lagoon area here, and I'd rather have housing. And I'll be in this area here, look, we had a forest fire from that lava pit. Isn't that intense, um, I want, I would rather have housing in this, in this little area here. Yes, we have these, but I think I still want to have housing. So what if we did the mine? Like right in this area, we could do the mine right back here behind this builder's workshop. On this side of city hall, and have minerals and stone and all of that. Be where the minerals and stone and all of that is, and then we could put. Now we have this coming out super far from here, um, because of city hall. But. And this is probably the closest we can put it, yes, it is, so. We could still put the warehouse right in this area, right here. And that I might like that way better. And if we put it there against these mountains, we could have whichever kind that we wanted to have. Like even one of the mediaevals, looks, see, we have birch, see all this birch right here? So it wouldn't be unrealistic to have an actual birch warehouse. Right here.